Ask Beverly to start the meeting.
Okay. This is to advise that in accordance with the Urban Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been forwarded to the Newark Star Ledger, the Asbury Park Press, the Courier News, the Daily Record, the Home News Tribune, the Jersey Journal, and the New Jersey Herald.
Thank you, Beverly. Before we get started with the roll call, let me just remind people of a few technical things. Good morning and welcome to the July 13th meeting of the North Jersey Transportation Authority Board of Trustees. I hope everyone was able to join us using the go-to-meeting instructions that were provided. And I might add that unfortunately, I have technical errors and I'm not able to join you on my computer. I'm on my telephone. But just a note, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed for our website. Some ground rules for the meeting. Please mute your device when you are not speaking so we can reduce background noise. When you're making a motion or comment, please state your name so that we know who you are. For those of you logged in through the website or app, please use the chat box to indicate when you'd like to comment or ask a question so that we can harmonize the amount of people talking over one another. Ted will be monitoring the chat box and will call on people in the order that requests come in. After those comments, we'll ask for any comment from those of you joining us by phone only. If, are there any questions about this? Hearing none, I'll ask Beverly to do the roll call.
Bergen?
Mrs. Peter, present.
Essex?
David Antonio, present.
Hudson?
Byron Nicholas, present.
Hunterden?
Matt Holt, present.
Jersey City?
Erica Patel, present.
Middlesex?
Charlie Kenny, present.
Monmouth?
Terry O'Connor, present.
Morris?
Catherine De Filippo, present.
Newark?
Philip Scott, present.
Ocean?
Jack Kelly, present.
Passaic?
John Bartlett, present.
Somerset?
Walt Lane, present.
Sussex?
Tom Grant, present.
Union?
Union?
Angel Estrada, present. And also I'm joined by Lysa Betts, who's somewhere in the 89 other people there.
Warren?
AIDS Back Care, present.
Jason Cernowski is also present.
Governor's Office?
Rudy Rodas, present.
NJ DOT?
Mike Russo, present.
NJ Transit?
Uma Lan, here.
Port Authority?
Steve Brown, present. I'm joined by Jay Sheffield.
Citizens Representative?
Jared Rundberg, present.
For Hunterden, I didn't catch the name.
Really, Beverly? You should know my voice by now. It's Matt Holt.
Oh, hello, Matt.
Hello, Beverly. No worries, Beverly.
Okay, we have 20 voting members present and a quorum.
Freeholder De Filippo, if you're talking, you might be on mute.
My apologies. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes of the May 11th board meeting?
Yes.
Freeholder Kelly?
Okay, I'm s- Freeholder Kelly, you moved the motion to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Walt Lane, second with the amendment that I was at the meeting, that I wasn't shown as an attendance.
Are there any other comments? Okay, thank you for that. And Beverly, can we just do an aye or do you need to do the attendance again, the roll call?
Oh, no, if you could just ask if anyone's opposed or anyone abstains, and that should take care of it.
Terrific. So did we have anyone that opposed the minutes? Anyone who'd like to abstain? Then with the correction, I'm sorry, what's that?
I'm sorry, this is Philip Scott from the city of Newark. I'm abstaining because I was not present.
Okay.
Charlie Kenny also, from Middlesex.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, with tho- with those corrections, her attendants are all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved.
Thank you, Beverly. And thank you for the rest of the board. I'd like to take this opportunity to present my report. Thank you for joining us for today's meeting. And again, I apologize for my technical errors on this end. This is our second virtual board meeting and one of many events that the NJTPA has hosted online since the COVID-19 pandemic forced us to close our office back in March. With the ongoing uncertainty surrounding the pandemic, we don't yet know when the office will reopen. Fortunately, the NJTPA has been able to conduct all of our work remotely. Given the current circumstances, we have decided that our board, committee, and RTAC meetings will continue to be held remotely until further notice. As I said, despite the need to meet in a virtual environment, our work continues. One example is last month's virtual board retreat on the Long Range Transportation Plan. I want to thank everyone who was able to participate. As you may recall, we originally intended to hold that event in person in Morris County, my home area. While that was impossible, I think the online platform worked very well. We covered a lot of ground while sticking to our 90-minute schedule and some important themes emerged as we discussed the outlook for the next long-range plan. I don't think it will come as a surprise to anyone that equity emerged as a main focus for Plan 2050. Recent incidents across our country have again put a spotlight on the racial and economic injustices that still exist today. Equity has long been central to the work of the NJTPA. Our staff strives to ensure that outreach is inclusive and accessible and along with the NJDOT and NJ Transit, we have sought to see that benefits and burdens of the transportation system are shared equally. Of course, it's no simple task to assess impacts and balance investments, but we must strive to do more. Plan 2050 provides us with an opportunity to think about how we can promote equity and make our region an even better place for all of our residents. I look forward to talking more about this and the other aspects of Plan 2050 with all of you later on this agenda. On the topic of virtual public outreach, I had the pleasure of participating in the Dover and Rockaway Railroad Freight Concept Development Study. That meeting was in late May. This event was originally planned to be held in person but was postponed because of the pandemic. Several members of the public and local businesses attended the virtual meeting to hear about the preliminary preferred alternative, which will eliminate seven ungated crossings, making the lines safer and more efficient. All meeting materials were posted online in English and Spanish and an interpreter was available at the virtual meeting. Even though we could not meet in person, the public was able to stay involved and engaged in the project. Virtual meetings are being planned for another concept development studies, including the Ocean Bridge in Monmouth County and the John F. Kennedy Boulevard in Hudson County. These virtual public forums allow us to keep projects moving through the pipeline while ensuring that the public has an opportunity to participate in the process. And clearly, if you can't get on your computer, you can use your telephone. And speaking of moving projects forward, I'm pleased to report that several of the NJTPA's locally-led projects have had their preliminary preferred alternatives approved by the Inter-Agency Review Committee and are headed to the engineering phase of work. These projects include the East Anderson Street Bridge in Bergen County, the Chadwick Beach Bridge in Ocean County, the Picket Place Bridge in Somerset County, and last but certainly not least, the Martin Luther King Avenue Bridge in my home county of Morris. In addition, I'm pleased to note that three more bridge projects over the Passaic will be moving to the engineering phase soon. The Clay Street Bridge and the Bridge Street Bridges, both managed by Hudson County, and the Kingsland Avenue Bridge being led by Bergen County. This is another great example of how the NJTPA is continuing its important task of improving regional transportation while working remotely. Thanks to the staff of our counties, NJDOT, and the NJTPA for keeping these projects moving forward. Of course, we're not the only ones who have had to adapt to our approach due to the pandemic. For those of you who haven't heard, the New Jersey Transaction Conference announced that it will hold a virtual event in the fall. As you know, the NJTPA helps organize this conference and many more board members have participated over the years. Details are still being finalized, but central staff will share them with us as soon as we know more. And finally, I have one more announcement to make before we move on. I'm pleased to share the name for the Long Range Plan 2050. It will be Transportation, People, Opportunity. I look forward to speaking with you more about the plan shortly. However, before I turn things over to Mary, I'd like to take a moment to say a few words about our Morris County Transportation Director, Jerry Rochler, who is retiring after a long career with the county. Jerry started out as a senior planner for Morris County in 1982. He then became a supervising planner for 20 years before being promoted to Transportation Director in 2004. Needless to say, with that kind of experience, Jerry has an impressive record of accomplishment. Here's just a few examples. He supervised Morris County's short-line freight railroads for more than 15 years. He's been Morris County's NJTPA Board alternate for many years and has worked with the NJTPA staff on many efforts, including the Morris Canal Greenway. And I just want to make mention that Jerry has been participating before the NJTPA was even the NJTPA. It used to be called a tri-state and they used to have their meetings in New York City. I think it was at the World Trade Center. In any event, Jerry has been that active with the, with transportation in Morris County and we can't thank him enough for his dedication. A few other things he's done. He's helped secure funding to advance numerous transportation projects, including the New York Sesquahana and Western Bicycle and Pedestrian Path. Under Jerry's supervision and direction, numerous NJTPA-funded transportation studies were completed, including the Morris County Circulation Element, the Freight Infrastructure and Land Use Plan, and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Element. On top of this, Jerry oversees Morris County's power transit and the county's former metro bus system. And his work helped advance construction of the New Jersey Transit's Mount Arlington Station. Or I prefer to call it Mount Arlington and Roxbury Station because it's littering on the border of our two towns, my hometown Roxbury. Finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that Jerry gave a lot of people their start in professional transportation planning. And he worked with and helped advance the planning careers of so many people over the years. One of these is John Hayes, Principal Transportation Planner with Morris County, who will be taking Jerry's place as my alternative on the board. John has long been involved in the NJTPA through RTAC and other work. So Jerry, here's to you. Congratulations on a stellar career and thank you for your dedicated professional service to the county and the region. Enjoy your retirement at the end of the month and welcome to John Hayes. And if I could ask everybody to just applaud Jerry for a moment, let him know we're here in spirit and sorry we can't be in person. Thank you very much for that. And Jerry, I look forward to seeing you in person eventually. To, I can't thank you enough for what you've done for me over the seven years as a freeholder and prior to that, all the years that I worked locally on the Roxbury Council. With that, I will turn the agenda over to our Executive Director, Mary Amen.
Thank you and good morning. Let me also add my congratulations to Jerry Rochler on an excellent career and I hope our paths will cross. As the Chair noted, this is our second virtual board meeting and we continue to meet all of the NJTPA's requirements and obligations despite the many challenges of these most unusual times. In terms of how and when our operations might get back to normal, there is no established schedule at this point. However, we are closely following the lead of the Governor and are in ongoing contact with our host agency, NJIT. But in the meantime, the important work of this agency is getting done. The Chair mentioned the virtual outreach meetings being conducted for the freight and local concept development projects. And as you know, last month, we completed our second round of virtual committee meetings. We also held a second virtual discussion with our up-next Young Adult Advisory Group on June 18th. It featured a presentation on communities opening streets for more walking, biking, and outdoor dining and retail, followed by a discussion on ways to improve walking and cycling. We received valuable input for Plan 2050. Last month, we also took part in the MAP Forum's Spring Meeting where we shared information and collaborated on regional issues with nine other MPOs representing New Jersey, New York, Connecticut, and Pennsylvania. And on June 6th, we hosted a Together North Jersey Virtual Workshop on Micro Mobility. This was an insightful 90-minute discussion and you can find a link to the recording on our website. I should also note that July 1 marks the end of NJTPA's fiscal year 2020 and the beginning of fiscal year 2021. In the coming weeks, you'll be seeing final reports from several fiscal year 20 efforts, including updated freight commodity profiles and two sub-regional studies, Patterson-Newark Transit Market Study and the Jersey City Parking Plan. We're already moving ahead with projects for the new fiscal year. Staff is reviewing proposals for the next round of sub-regional studies and for initiatives funded with Congestion Mitigation Air Quality, or CMAC, funds, including support for local settlements. One of the priorities for this year, which the Chair mentioned, is to strengthen equity in the work we do, particularly in better addressing the needs of minority and low-income communities. This has been brought into sharp focus by the current wave of national protests about racial injustice. Along with other institutions and agencies, we recognize that we must do our part to undo the legacy and continuing impact of racism, which extend in many ways to the transportation sector. Last year, we adopted a Title VI Plan that guides our compliance with federal civil rights requirements. As a follow-up, we formed an internal Title VI Environmental Justice Working Group to help implement the plan and undertake an equity assessment of all our plans and programs. In addition, we are committed to providing guidance to subregions to better address the concerns of minority and low-income communities in their planning work. We will, we will be reporting to the board on our progress and we welcome your input on other approaches and activities. In fiscal year 21, we will be funding another round of projects under our Local Safety and High-Risk Rural Roads Programs. Proposed projects are being evaluated and selected projects will be on the Project Prioritization Committee Agenda in August with board action planned for September. These are among our most successful programs, funding important improvements that have been proven to reduce crashes and enhance safety. These include upgraded traffic signals, high-friction pavement, road diets, modern roundabouts, pedestrian countdown signals, high-visibility crosswalks, bike lanes, signage improvements, and more. Our last allocation for these programs occurred two years ago, which reflects not only the limited funding available but also the fact that many projects in recent years have become larger and more complex. We're determined to see that selected projects get authorized and are moving forward satisfactorily prior to carefully and methodically adding more projects into the program. This means we will not be releasing solicitations annually but rather as program capacity allows, likely, likely a minimum of two years. The program has grown because of its success and we will need to adapt our business practices to ensure more robust and extensive program delivery for these critical safety improvements. Before I close, a couple of final items. You should have received a notice about the latest issue of In Transition Magazine, which launched on our updated website and includes articles on electric vehicles and climate change. A link is on the NJTPA homepage and we welcome your feedback. Also, I'm pleased to announce that on September 10, shortly before our September 14 board meeting, we'll be hosting a virtual meeting of the MAP Forum's Multi-State Freight Working Group, which will feature a workshop discussion on truck parking. Please put it on your calendar and stay tuned for further details. That include, that concludes my report, Chair De Filippo, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mary. We appreciate that. We have committee reports. We're going to start with Freeholder John Bartlett, Chair of the Project Prioritization Committee, to give the committee report. John?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm happy to report on the activities of the Project Prioritization Committee. Since our last board meeting, the committee has considered three action items. First, during a special online meeting on May 12, the committee considered a modification to the current Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, to add federal funds to the Route 78 Rockfall Mitigation Bethlehem Township Project as requested by the New Jersey Department of Transportation. The project is ready for authorization and requires additional federal funding in the amounts of $6.9 million for fiscal year 2020 and $1 million for 2022. The increase is due to updated costs for mobilization, excavation, environmental vibration monitoring, and construction engineering. Resources are available from the Rockfall Mitigation line item in the TIP. On a related note, as many of you know, members of the board have raised concerns about the rising cost of rockfall projects in the region. Members of central staff are currently working with NJDOT to learn more details about the state's rockfall mitigation program and will be sharing additional information on this issue with the board soon. Next, at the joint online meeting in June, the committee considered two action items. The first was a modification to the current TIP to add federal funds to the Route 80 Riverview Drive to Polly Fly Road project as requested by NJDOT. Based on recently updated schedules and cost estimates, the design phase of work can be advanced sooner than originally programmed. This action shifts $36 million in design funds to fiscal year 2022 from 2023 and adds $7.7 million in Federal National Highway Performance Program, or NHPP, funds to the project. These resources are available from unobligated prior-year funds. Also, a spelling correction of Polly Fly Road in the title was needed. Next, the committee considered a TIP modification to add federal funds to the Route 46 Main Street-Woodstone Road to Route 287 ITS Project in Morris County, also requested by NJDOT. Based on recent updated schedule and cost estimates, half a million dollars in NHPP is needed for right-of-way in fiscal year 2021. In addition, the construction phase of work must also be reprogrammed into fiscal year 2022 with an increase of nearly $1 million for a total of $9.7 million in NHPP funds. These dollars are available from prior-year unobligated funds. The committee approved all three of these modifications and no further action is needed. That concludes the Project Prioritization Committee report.
Thank you, John. Next, I'll call on Freeholder John Kelly, who is the Chair of the Planning and Economic Development Committee, to give his committee report. Jack, are you there?
I am here. Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of the Planning and Economic Development Committee, I'm pleased to report that at the June joint meeting, staff provided a recap of the June board retreat, which focused on priorities for Plan 2050. Today, we'll be revisiting Plan 2050 and looking at how the region can capitalize on its strengths and related opportunities. One editorial comment, I do have to note for the record the disappointment of Ocean County that the Route 9 widening project from Lakewood to Tom's River has been removed and replaced with what we believe to be minor improvements rather than a widening of that road. That editorial comment aside, it is important to note that the Planning and Economic Development Committee will play a key role in developing the, directing the development of Plan 2050 over the coming months. While 2050 may seem impossibly far off in the future, we should recognize that projects we conceive today often take years to develop and implement and the resulting infrastructure can last for decades. Indeed, much of our work repairing and upgrading the transportation network addresses facilities that are 50, 100, and even more years old. On the regional rail system, the Hudson River Rail tunnels date back to 1910. So we are in this for the long game. The priorities and objectives we set today will shape the future of travel and regional development. To this end, members of the Planning and Economic Development Committee will be tasked with reviewing interim products such as the financial element, demographic forecast, and more. The committee will also guide staff on the content and the recommendations of the plan. I look forward to working with the staff, the committee, and all members on the board on these important tasks. Madam Chair, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. And now I've got a call on Freeholder Charles Kenny, Chair of the Freight Initiatives Committee, to give his committee report. Hi, Charlie.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I am pleased to report on the June 15 Freight Initiatives Committee meeting, which featured our annual port and maritime updates. Speakers discussed how goods have continued to move through the port during the COVID-19 pandemic, helping supply the state with food and other essentials. We also heard about a current marine highway initiative involving Port Raritan in my home county of Middlesex. The first speaker we had up was Beth Ann Rooney of the Port Authority. She said that the pandemic has presented many challenges, including keeping workers safe and ensuring that goods, hold on here, sorry. I just jumped forward on my stuff. Here we go. Uh, let's see. Including keeping workers safe and ensuring that goods were not strained at the port due to warehouse closures. due to warehouse closures. Ms. Rooney said container volumes at the port declined 3% to 4% through the end of April, and that was much less than the 30% anticipated drop, reflecting the port's strength in serving a vast multi-state region that is home to some 45 million people. She did note, however, that other Port Authority facilities had more drastic losses, airport travelers and path ridership fell by 90%, and there was a 60% to 70% decline in bridge and tunnel traffic. Ms. Rooney said that as the economy rebounds, the Port Authority will continue to implement its Port Master Plan. This includes improving express rail, reducing greenhouse gas emissions from operations, and undertaking major projects such as upgrading the port's northern entrance and exit. Next, we were joined by John Nardi, President of the New York Shipping Association. He spoke about the pandemic's effects on the workforce. He noted that the Council on Port Performance, which includes public and private stakeholders, is meeting more often in response to the pandemic. It has expanded its work to address more immediate crisis-related concerns in addition to its ongoing focus on workforce development, terminal operations, and rail network optimization. Mr. Nardi said labor issues have proven especially challenging. He noted that the Shipping Association joined with the International Longshoremen's Association to create joint guidance for workers and operators. He also said there has been extensive investment to provide workers with personal protective equipment and implement other safeguards. However, approximately 800 of the port's 3,500 workers have been unable to work due to reduced cargo volumes. The Shipping Association is working closely with the state of New Jersey, the Port Authority, and various industrial groups and industry groups on the economic recovery efforts, and it was noted that the volumes have begun to rebound. Our final presenter was Genevieve Clifton from the NJDOT, who spoke about the prospects for expanding marine highway operations in the state. The current crisis has underlined the need for improving logistics redundancy, and marine highways can help with this. The U.S. Maritime Administration, or MARAD, has called for marine highway along the Atlantic coast. And Ms. Clifton said the Raritan Center Business Park in Woodbridge, Woodbridge and Edison, I don't want Edison getting mad, offers a prime opportunity for this. She said the NJDOT will seek MARAD support for public-private partnership to develop the area for expanded maritime services. Ms. Clifton explained that Port Raritan is at the confluence of rail, water, and highway transportation. Potential services from the site could include barges carrying roll-on, roll-off truck trailers delivered to New York City and surrounding areas. This approach could bypass crowded highways, offering cost savings to shippers, and reducing congestion, crashes, and the environmental impacts of truck traffic. At the next meeting of the Freight Initiatives Committee, we will focus on articulating, analyzing, and displaying supply chains critical to goods movement in our region. I just want to thank Anne and Jacob and all the technical people behind the scenes that put together our last meeting. It's greatly appreciated. And Madam Chair, this concludes the Freight Initiative Committee report.
Thank you, Charlie. Before we start with our key discussion, I just want to mention to the public that please pay attention and listen and write down your questions. After our discussion among the board members, we will have a public participation, and we welcome the public to join us in the discussion at that point. With that, I'm going to turn to today's Plan 2050 discussion item, which follows up nicely on last month's virtual board retreat. As we continue to develop our new long-range plan, today, we'll talk more specifically about how to turn our region's many strengths into opportunities. Lois Goldman has a presentation, and will help get our discussion started. I encourage all of the board members to participate in this important conversation. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lois.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, as you know, we had, prior to the discussions at last month's board retreat, there was a survey to gauge our board and subregions' priorities for developing the next long-range plan. As was mentioned before, the survey looked at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that we'll be facing our region over the next 20 to 30 years. If you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So today, as was mentioned prior, we want the board to help us explore how the NJTPA can take advantage of the opportunities you identified. This will help us develop the long-range plan and also shape what we ask the public when we go out for public outreach. We'll be focusing on five key opportunities identified during the retreat. And as Chair DiFilippo said, this discussion is for the board members only, and please use the chat box if you'd like to make comments or if you'd like to indicate that you'd like to say something. Thank you. If you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So the first opportunity we're going to talk about is our downtowns. Northern New Jersey is the densest part of the nation, and many people want to live and work in downtown and denser areas. These areas promote economic growth, reduce the need for travel, and the creation of greenhouse gases, and also offer opportunities to people of all income levels without having to use a vehicle. So how do we invest in our downtowns and transit hubs to make them even more successful? Chair, would you like to start us off?
I'm sorry, once again.
What are the questions?
I know, I was apologizing. I attempted to speak on mute once again. Yeah, I don't know. Why don't we start with one of the first questions we were discussing was looking at the... I'm sorry, I lost that window, too. I apologize. This has not been a good morning. Perhaps somebody else would like to start us off.
I think one of the things that we've heard about generally was the bike from pedestrian that is one way that we happen to support our...
Lois, Charlie Kenny here?
Yes, sir.
One of the things that was brought up, and this was through consulting with Solomon and Doug and Tony and the rest of our department, as we look at our 2040 plan that we're putting together, parking, you know, parking in downtown areas is always a big issue, but what becomes of parking as autonomous vehicles get brought in and the need for parking declines? Do we, you know, do people have that, I guess, thought in their head as they're redeveloping their downtowns that need for parking is immediate right now, but later on down the road, can they turn that into some type of, as they don't need it, a public park in the downtown area? That maybe brings in an area where restaurants or businesses can set up, or people can come and just hang out, a green space? And another investment for the downtown area was possibly charging stations, you know, trying to get towns to look at possibly putting charging stations along their roadways at parking spaces, so that this way they encourage the use of green vehicles. I hope that is part of where we're at.
Thank you. Yes, those are all good. Anyone else?
This is Jared Rodriguez. I think with restaurants reopening and a lot of car-free streets pilots that are occurring is where there's a lot of outdoor dining, really good... Like... Where... Pilots in this... And in a lot of our downtowns in... Potential models for permanent car-free streets. Share. Goals are attained.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm breaking up a little bit, having a little bit of a problem hearing. I hope other people were able to hear better.
I'll put it in the chat.
Thank you, Jared. I appreciate that.
Hi, Lois, it's Walt from Somerset.
Well...
I just, when we're talking about investments, I would like, not only the physical transportation improvements and projects that create a place making and those types of issues, but also investing the planning dollars. I think the emerging, you know, Planning for Emerging Centers Program and the local suburban studies help provide those resources to the towns to help them take advantage of those assets that they have, those mixed-use hubs, transit villages, transit stations, but also not forgetting the planning money to help them achieve those goals is important as well.
Okay, thank you. I'm timekeeping, I'm not looking at my phone while you're talking. We have about another minute or so. Is there anybody else who has something else they'd like to add? And you can, again, continue with the chat box on any of these topics as we go.
Hi, Lois?
Yes?
Mike in Passaic County. I think when we talk about downtowns, too, structuring the way things are funded, especially with larger trends, investments such as train stations, things of that nature, and how the proposed development can kind of bring in value capture, or at least third-party agreements and public-private partnerships to fund some of those hubs with all the investment that's coming there.
Thank you, thank you. And that was certainly something that came up at the retreat, the idea of getting more creative with financing and value capture. Any other comments before we move on to the next topic? I'll reset my time.
Can I make it?
Yes.
The members of the public?
Well, this conversation right now is just for the board members.
Oh, okay.
As a reminder, members of the public will have an opportunity to speak about this during the public participation following our board discussion. Lois, I just, you know, I want to repeat exactly what has been said, is that we do need to look at new public and private partnerships, and also parking has been a big issue, but also signage, pedestrian safety wrapped into all of that with some of my notes. Are there any other comments from the board members?
Yeah, this is Dave Beck from Warren County.
Yes, Dave.
Hi. In addition to the parking, I do believe that for downtowns to be successful is that we need to provide for a safe pedestrian crossings and sidewalks and whatnot to enable the pedestrians to be able to walk through the downtown as safely as possible and protected from vehicular traffic.
Great, thank you. Melissa, let's move on to the next topic, which is diversity and equity. And I, so our region, it hosts and is welcoming to people with a broad range of skill sets, education, ethnicities, and skin tones. And this gives us a lot of cultural resources and are the ingredients for creativity and innovation. So how can our region take advantage of its diverse population to improve quality of life and support economic development with more equitable outcomes for all residents? So this is our second topic, diversity and equity.
Lois, as the chair, I'll take an opportunity to speak. Kathy DiFilippo, now that I have my notes and my screen back up. You know, I'm going to speak about Western Morris and Morris County in general, but particularly Western Morris. We need help with an improved bus system and improvement over the train service. As you know, west of Dover does not have electric train overhead, so we are limited. We cannot be a one-stop, one-ride to get to New York, but it's also very, very limited train service that comes west of Dover, and that prohibits people who work, who live east of us, where there are many jobs out west in Morris County that would be available. So we'd love to see an improvement in bus and train service. With that, I'll let somebody else take the floor.
Thank you. And I'm turning off my camera to try to improve the audio quality. I hope that helped. Anybody else on this?
Tom Raven from Sussex County, and I would echo and strongly support, and I know our county representative would, too, for improved train service west of Dover, in particular out to the Sussex and Warren County areas to help relieve some of the continuing congestion in the I-80 corridor and provide access to jobs along the rail lines in North Jersey to Sussex, Warren, and northeastern Pennsylvania residents.
Thank you.
Hunter County? Hey, this is Pat Holt, Hunter County. I'm going to follow a similar theme, but the focus in my mind isn't simply transportation in New York City. The focus is that the job market is, for example, in Hunter County, our residents are traveling to Somerville, they're traveling to Morristown, they're traveling to Princeton, they're traveling a number of different places, not just New York City, and therefore, transportation as a whole needs to be reviewed to look at interstate city-to-city transportation that allows people to leave vehicles at home and to be able to, on a consistent basis, get to a job and get back again. Secondarily, I think you're going to see a change in how people are working. I think you're going to see a move towards more at-home work-related issues. So the question becomes, where do you, how do you take a look at road funding and recognize that there may be a way to reduce actual impact on road surfaces, and therefore, what are the alternatives to move people more effectively around the state? The western side of the state has no alternatives. It is simply a matter of getting your car and go somewhere, and the work environment is not simply traveling to one destination, it's multiple destinations, and that's what we should be focused on.
Thank you. And that was something that also came up at the retreat, the New Jersey to New Jersey tour, particularly by transit. That was one of the things that came out.
Lois, this is Steve Brown, Port Authority. I would just say that NJTPA's outreach efforts are really important to tackling diversity and equity. We should continue outreach efforts to get a lot of perspectives on how citizens view transportation and how they use it and what their needs are.
Lois?
So, Mike in Passaic County. Actually, a study we just completed with the support of the NJTPA, and our Patterson-Newark study identifies two of the largest environmental justice communities in Newark and Patterson, and it really highlights the deficiencies in access to those job markets between them, again, that New Jersey-New Jersey commute, and identifies, you know, I think, an ideal project that could link those up, but I think you can just apply that to the rest of the state, especially in those communities that have those poor quality of services and access such as high-speed internet, where they don't even have the opportunity to commute from home. And I think we also have to look at these corridors for multiple solutions and be creative in that diversity and equity. If you're building a rail or a bus project, why not put a Greenway? Why not add high-speed internet within that right-of-way and really try to not just connect those communities physically, but within as many pieces of those markets as possible to really elevate those communities?
Thank you. And I just wanted to read, Jared Rodriguez had a comment in the chat box. "We think structurally racist zoning practices impair these zoning modifications with transit improvements. More housing and transportation options equals more equity." And I think that's very much what we're hearing from several of the board members. Is there any final comments on this topic before we go forward? Is there any final comments on this topic before we go forward?
Charlie Kenny from Middlesex. Uh, last year, I know at the, uh, retreat, um, that Freeholder Estrada ran, uh, there, the speaker there talked about, um, magnet schools or magnet schools creating, um, that end up being more diverse, and, um, that diversity helps, um, along the, um, um, better school achievement. Um, it helps to have a more positive, um, attitude towards, uh, racial differences. So I know it doesn't sound like transportation, but it's also an area that, that we could look at is, um, schooling.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Um, and certainly we work very closely with the, uh, the programs that help people be able to get walk to school, walk in cycle to school, which is one-way accessing education. Um, shall we move on? Melissa, shall we move on to the next topic? I want to make sure we have time for all of them. Thank you. So the next topic we're going to talk about is freight. And, uh, as you know, we have the largest port on the East Coast right here in our region, and this generates a tremendous amount of economic activity and a range of jobs. How can we capitalize on our region's robust freight and logistics sector to grow the economy and create opportunities for more residents? Chair, with, Chair or any of our board members like to start?
As the chair, again, I'll, I'll start it off, uh, but I'm going to say loudly, uh, to continue the freight concept development program. Um, it has been very successful. I know Morris County is taking advantage of it. Um, and with that, also public and private partnership again. Uh, and that's where, you know, we saw that successfully, um, working on the hole in the wall out in Phillipsburg, uh, to be able to, um, lift the height restrictions so that we could get trains in, and now we're addressing the 286 rail. Uh, so I, um, applaud the freight concept development plan and encourage that we, uh, continue to use it, um, for the benefit of all. And with that, uh, any of the other free, uh, freeholders like to join in this discussion?
Uh, Lois, Charlie Kenny again from Middlesex.
Yes.
Uh, just, um, the, the promotion or the, the looking into of, uh, more autonomous, autonomous, uh, vehicles and operations. But while we do that, that has to go hand-in-hand with, uh, workforce and job development so that we make sure the people that either will be at, be displaced by going to that, or people that are looking for jobs can be trained and find jobs in the new fields that are created, uh, once autonomous vehicles come into play.
Thank you. Sir, are you talking about, um, autonomous vehicles in the port? Is that, um, and, and in, um, boots movement or just in general?
Um, i- in the freight movement and in the port, um, both.
Thank you. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, Lois in the chat box, um, Jared Rodriguez commented that marine highway and increased, um, intermodality is also going to support new industries, including offshore wind power, um, and that could potentially increase jobs.
Thank you. Thank you. And it's hard for me to do both, look at the chat box and, and listen. Thank you.
Hi Lois, it's Walt from Somerset. It's Walt from Somerset. I was just going to, just to tie back to the, uh, the previous one, you know, with these, with these growing jobs and logistics, we have to make sure people have equal access to those, um, and jobs and looking at, uh, access to those places and making sure that workforce is linked, so they do have those opportunities. So this kind of ties back with the equity and diversity question, making sure that they're, that the people that fill those jobs, that, that labor force can actually reach where the jobs are located.
That's a great point. Thank you. Any, anyone else on this topic?
Yeah, Lois, um, Trevor Howard, City of Newark, um, suggests working with urban areas, um, in the immediate vicinity of the port region to maximize land use, uh, for freight and jobs, related jobs.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, this, Lois, this is Tom from Sussex. Um, I think we need to continue to, to focus on some of the, uh, major freight rail improvements in the region that still needs, that still need to be done in order to, again, try and move as much, uh, freight in the region as possible by rail, uh, in order to continue to help reduce the congestion on the major highways because obviously, we all know there won't be any major, um, capacity improvements on the, uh, major highway corridors in the region. So we really need to continue to, uh, uh, support and push for the long-term freight rail improvements in the region. Uh, in particular, the, uh, the access in and out of the port and, uh, those rail improvements that still need to be done.
That sounds great. Thank you. I'm sorry, one more comment and then we'll move on to the next topic if there was someone else. I'm sorry. Okay, let's move on to the next. Yeah, yes, yes.
This is Steve Brown, Port Authority again. Um, we've had great success, uh, Port Authority partnering with, uh, private sector in doing outreach to educators, educational institutions, to let, um, them know about jobs related to freight and to put them in a position to better train for those jobs. And I think that's something that's important that we'll continue doing so that we can develop the workforce.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, that, that is definitely something that I'd love to hear more about and learn more about what you're doing. Thank you. Um, the next topic I wanted to talk about was our transportation networks. And, and as, as has been mentioned, the NJTPA, the NJTPA region benefits from the enormous investments that have been made in our transportation systems over decades and centuries. And this gives us enormous multimodal travel opportunities. How, so how can we improve our region's extensive transportation network to help people and goods move more efficiently and safely? Anyone want to kick that off?
Hi, it's Kathy D. Filippo again. Uh, I'll start the conversation by not only talking about pedestrian safety, but also connectivity to other towns and parks. Uh, but, you know, out again in, um, many parts of, uh, western New Jersey here, um, we're not terribly far from one town to another, but there's really no safe way, uh, to get from one bike trail to another, uh, to be able to connect. And let's say get over to some of our bigger towns like Morristown, Madison, uh, where they have like wonderful restaurants and lots of choices, uh, for daytime activities. And if you, again, if you're going to be considering working from home, uh, the opportunity really for connectivity to get from one area of the county to the other, whether you choose to go bicycle riding, take a bus, uh, but again, or, or walk, again, we need to look at, uh, safety as being imperative and, um, connectivity. And I'll see if anybody else wants to jump in at this point.
Lois, um, the Citizens Representative Jared Rodriguez says, uh, we have to revive former passenger rail corridors to, uh, activate historically rail-oriented communities, um, with new passenger service. And he cites the, um, the West Shore Corridor, um, and expanding beyond Dover and into Pennsylvania as examples.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Lois, Charlie Kenny again from Middlesex.
Yes.
Uh, one of the, um, things we could do is look at, um, best practices or ideas from other regions on, um, solutions that they found to provide transportation with, uh, feasible or reasonably cost, um, options.
So looking to find more, um, um, economic solutions.
Yeah, looking to see any best practices that they, they might have had in other regions so that, um, we can, we can look at possibly more feasible options to move people from place to place.
Anyone else? Any, uh, you know, we've also heard a lot today about, uh, public-private partnerships and funding, and I assume that that is an opportunity also to explore.
Yeah, Lois, this is Dave Beck again. I just want to expand on, uh, what, uh, Mr. Rodriguez said about, um, extending or reviving old rail networks. And that would include, in our region, though, the extension of Lackawanna Cut Off into, uh, Northeastern Pennsylvania through Sussex and Warren County. But also, I'd like to, uh, throw out there to look at the, uh, extension of the Raritan Valley Line where it currently ends in High Bridge and look at extending that rail line out to, um, Phillipsburg, New Jersey to help relieve the, uh, traffic congestion on the I-78 corridor as well.
Thank you. Um, I think we have time for one more comment.
Hey Lois, it's Lou from Transit. I have a comment. Uh, I, I think we're starting to get at the heart of the matter with this issue. Uh, there are a lot of desired, uh, new transit investments, transportation investments, uh, and probably dozens of them. Uh, but to date, the funding available to advance them has been barely above what is needed to maintain the existing system at a state of good repair. Over the long term, when we start to look at transportation funding and the funding model, which is largely based on a gas tax, and we start to think about, uh, changes in behavior that might reduce, uh, the revenue that would be coming in from that source, you start to ask yourself some serious questions about, well, where's the money going to come from for our basic transportation needs, not to mention all of the expansion projects. Now also, as time passes, these projects become more complicated. Uh, rules change, regulations change, uh, you name it. Uh, the requirements for building now are different from what they were even five years ago. Uh, so, starting to take a look at funding, uh, these needs in a realistic way and in a long-term way to make, uh, make these projects possible, I, I think is a, an important exercise as part of the long-range planning exercise, effort. There are many projects, and, and I think we would be remiss to list some and, and not all of them. I've heard some of them named here, but there are many other projects, and you've heard all the names before. Uh, West Trenton Line, the MOM Project, and I can go on and on and on. But again, look at what's in the bank now, look at how that money gets there, and what is it going to take to change the situation? So you could actually build these things realistically in the long term. I think those are important questions to ask in a long-range planning effort.
Yes, absolutely. I'd like to just end this section. Um, I see that there is another comment from Jared Rodriguez, our Citizens Rep. He says reconsider interurban streetcars. New Jersey had the most extensive streetcar system in the United States, and this was mostly destroyed around World War II. This will better linger our existing dense communities with one another. And I think that echoes what many people are already saying. So Melissa, can you move on to the last topic? Um, that I wanted to discuss with you today, which is technology. And as you know, our region has a long legacy of technology and innovation. From the Morris Canal and its 22 incline planes, the hosting Thomas Edison, to the leadership that our state has shown in solar energy, as well as the innovative work being done at NJIT, Rutgers, other universities, and in the private sector. So how can the NJTPA region's strong innovative culture prepare us for realizing the benefits that new technologies offer? Chair, Chair D. Filippo, would you like to kick us off on that?
Okay, I'll start again. You know, I think we need to expand on the, um, electrical vehicle stations, but also for natural gas tanks. Uh, we, we need to have more available. And then also, um, to be looking at, um, something as simple as message boards and using smart apps, but being able to advertise for people to know more about the smart apps to know about when their train or buses to arrive. Um, I have traveled and there are places where, you know, you know exactly what moment a train or a bus is going to arrive at the station you're standing in, which is appreciative when you're in a foreign country, uh, to know you're headed in the right direction. But, um, I think that we could be better at that, um, and more consistent at it. Um, that, that's just my first thoughts, and I'll turn it over to anyone else that, uh, would like to chime in.
Anyone else?
This is, um, John Bartlett from Passaic County. It seems to me that when we're talking about technology, one of the things we need to be making sure that we do is find those opportunities to co-locate new technologies like, you know, dark fiber and other kinds of ways to extend access for high-speed internet as part of what we're doing infrastructure-wise in the same way that we have to coordinate with the sewer when we're digging a road. When we're extending or expanding or modernizing, what else could we be doing, even if it's outside the transit footprint, but that's still, you know, infrastructure and technology improvements akin to, uh, rural electrification two generations ago.
Certainly, um, the idea, the, um, the, the topic of broadband connectivity and access was also, came up in many different ways at our retreat. Anyone else?
Charlie Kenny from, uh, Middlesex County.
Yes, sir.
Um, how, maybe, um, creating a partnership, uh, with the researchers and the innovators to show how, what they're, uh, creating um, is applicable, applicable on a, uh, regional and local level here in the state of New Jersey. I guess, I guess it would be more to make, um, those decision-makers aware of, uh, what is actually out there and how it could benefit their, uh, their towns and their communities.
Terrific. That's a great idea. We've already started to do some, some small partnerships with NJIT on, in that way. Some projects related to safety and things like that.
Hopefully, hopefully Doug and, uh, Solomon are on here and heard exactly what you just said.
I see Doug smiling, so I think so.
Lois, uh, this is Ted. Byron Nicholas from Hudson County had a comment that actually crosses, uh, across to several of the topic areas regarding, um, the suggestion to reconsider pay-by-distance types of services for transit. Um, and he notes that other places have introduced initiatives like Freedom Tickets that help the equity gap in transit. So that's one of those topics that really goes across, um, a lot of different issues.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Okay, um, well, if there's, if there's further comments, obviously, this is not our, our last conversation about Plan 2050, and I want to really thank everybody for their input. Um, we will be taking this as we work on, on the plan in the coming weeks and months. And now I'd like to turn, uh, this, uh, conversation over to my colleague Ted Ritter, who's going to talk for a few minutes about the upcoming public outreach. Ted?
Yeah, thanks a lot, Lois. I appreciate it. I think this has been a good discussion so far, but regarding Plan 2050's public outreach and engagement, we're pretty lucky at the NJTPA to have two professional public outreach consultants working with us this time. You've met some of the key members of the team from McCormick Taylor and Mercer Planning at last month's Board of Retreat. Um, and you'll recall that we've been working for quite a while now with the Public Outreach and Engagement Team over at Rutgers University's Voorhees Transportation Center. We've actually been working with them for the past several years. Well, they're going to be handling some of the specialized public outreach to specific groups that we want to make sure we involve in Plan 2050. So like young adults, for ex, for example, and other groups who have been, you know, especially challenging to engage in long-range planning efforts in the past. Um, and Rutgers VTC is also, of course, going to continue supporting our Up Next Young Adults Advisory Committee, um, here at the right-hand, uh, screen, uh, there, uh, at our virtual, uh, June event that we held. Um, and the young adults from Up Next have already been providing us with some valuable input for a long-range plan. All right, so next, as we did for Plan 2045 last time, we're planning to have a robust online outreach effort this time for Plan 2050. And obviously, given the current circumstances, we're going to be doing most, if not all, of our public outreach online. Uh, one example, we have an opportunity- One example, we have an opportunity that we're looking into to work with NJ.com on some outreach there. We're also shifting our planned 2050 Symposium Series, which typically, obviously, we would do in person. We're going to be doing those virtually this time. So yeah, the format, you know, is probably going to be a little bit different than what we initially envisioned. But the good news is, is that despite the usual, you know, glitches that you get in any meeting virtually, we're all, I think, becoming much better and more skilled at conducting virtual events. So as we did with the Board Retreat virtually last month, and with the Together North Jersey Micro mobility, Micromobility Workshop that you see here at the lower right, we're planning for an initial virtual symposium in October, we think, with a focus on adapting to change, which is certainly a good topic for these times. So stay tuned for details on that, and we'll share them and get the word out so that you all can keep involved. All right, so another key component of our Plan 2050 Public Outreach Program is a special advisory committee. And we'll be organizing this and relying upon this group to make sure we engage the right people and talk to the right groups to ensure that our plan is inclusive and equitable and representative of this diverse region. And this group is also going to help us get the word out, right, about the plan and ways that residents can get involved. And on top of this, Rutgers VTC has already been reaching out to community groups that serve low-income residents, limited English-speaking populations, as well as people with disabilities and seniors, to find out how we can best engage these groups virtually, or maybe even by, by traditional snail mail, since we're unable to meet in person. So before I get into the overall kind of timeframe for Plan 2050, does anyone have any questions about the public outreach and engagement for Plan 2050? All right, so hearing none, before we wrap up, let's just do a quick reminder of the timeframe for the entire effort. So public outreach getting underway like right now, right? And will continue probably through the spring at least, right? Then we'll have a draft Plan 2050 with a formal public comment period, and that'll not only be on the plan, but also usually do the tip and the air quality conformity determination at the same time. So for that, we're looking, what, like late summer or early fall of next year? And then ultimately, you, as the NJTPA Board, will be asked to adopt the final plan. We're looking at fall 2021 on that. So that's the schedule. We're going to try to stick to it as close as possible, and of course, we'll be communicating right along. But I just want to take a minute on behalf of the entire staff to thank you as the board for your active participation and engagement in this, because I know you're all very busy locally with all kinds of complex and changing dynamics and details amid this pandemic. So we'll make sure that we maximize your time and get you updated through our tech and the committees, and of course, the board meetings about not only our plan development, but also all public outreach opportunities. And we'll try to get you involved as much as possible. So that's all I've got. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to, be happy to talk.
Ted, this is Kathy De Filippo. I, I want to applaud you for bringing out the, describing how you're going to do the outreach to reach out to minority groups, low income, working on a task force for the census. We worked, we worked very often in, with a number of groups in our communities that work with different, different groups of population to, and we've been pretty successful for the first step of the census. And, you know, people are afraid to talk to just anyone. And given my experience, when we first started doing public outreach, gosh, over a year ago, when we were walking around at fairs and food, food festivals with an iPad in hand, asking for questions, asking questions of people, some were forthcoming and many were stepping backwards, shying away from somebody with an iPad in their hand. So I applaud the work we've been doing for public outreach and the work that you anticipate doing going forward. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, Chair, and I appreciate that comment. And that's, you know, part of that is on us. We have to make, we have to make what we're doing and the things that we're asking of the public for input on this long-range plan. We need to make this personal, and we need to make it simple. And I think if we can do those two things and broaden our outreach as much as possible, whether it be virtually, in-person, mail, electronic, a combination of everything, well, then that's what we're going to have to do. So thank you.
I just want to add as an example to all this. You know, I work for transportation and have my entire political life here in Morris County, and yet I recently learned something that I hadn't considered, and it's something as simple as going to the grocery store. And then in a, in a town or a city where the grocery store is not around the corner, and you don't have a vehicle, and we all know that I complain that we don't have adequate bus service in the area, I find that families actually join together once a week to split the bill for an Uber vehicle, to drop them off and come back and pick them up after their grocery shopping. So I think that that is how important it is to reach out to so many different groups, because once they get comfortable talking, we're going to learn a lot more about the type of transportation needs they, they need. And I just found it fascinating. It was something I hadn't considered. But, you know, a number of families pulling their, a couple, you know, pulling their resources together to be able to go grocery shopping, where most people with a vehicle don't think twice about. So I, I again, welcome the involvement to reach out to so many groups of people in our communities to really hear what it is they want and what they expect out of transportation. I guess at this point, I should, for time, go over to the public participation. Lois, are you comfortable with that? And Ted?
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Okay, so we're going to turn to that, but I have to request your comment or ask questions in the chat box if you are successful to get on the go-to meeting. And after that, then we'll go through those comments as they come in, and then we will, we will go to the telephones. And I believe there might be hesitation while the phones are unmuted. But then we will allow an opportunity for people who have called in today by the telephone. As a reminder, I want to advise members of the public that we have a three-minute time limit. And Ted, am I missing out on anything that I need to tell everybody? Use the chat box, and after that, wait for us to open for public comment. And please be respectful of our three-minute rule. So with that, we'll open up to the public session. Ted, I think you're in charge of that at this point?
Yeah, we had two speakers that signed up to speak in advance, Chair. The first is Neil Weisman.
Good morning, Neil.
I see that Neil posted in the chat box a link to his extended remarks on cycle tourism. That was going to be what he was going to speak about. I'm not sure if he's muted or just didn't get the cue, but he was the first to sign up. So maybe we'll go to Tim Severner, the second speaker, and if Neil gets back on, we can, we can have him speak after.
Neil, are you there, Neil? Go ahead, Neil.
He may be muted.
He's, he just responded that he's not muted. So, all right, well, we'll skip to Tim and come back, I guess. I'm not sure what's happening. Sorry.
Tim Severner, are you with us?
Hello, yeah. Can you hear me?
Go ahead. Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay. Well, you know, Tim Severner from the New Jersey Association of Rail Passengers, and I've been working with the 30 environmental groups against the natural gas plant in the Meadowlands. And it's very encouraging to hear what you're talking about. And one of the things that could be very major innovation, as I've been telling you for, I don't know, a year, is solar rail. And we have the chance to do that with this New Jersey Transit Grid funding, which should be primarily solar renewable power for the New Jersey Transit Grid instead of a 24 by 700 megawatt natural gas plant, which we don't really need new natural gas plants. When you're talking about working with experts, we've been working with Lyle Rawlings of Advanced Solar Products, who's done some of the major solar renewable installations in New Jersey, and also Professor Dunbar Bernie of Rutgers, to determine the feasibility and the resilience advantages of solar renewables plus storage for providing year-round clean power for the New Jersey Transit Grid. And, you know, I pointed out before, there was just another thing last week. India now is, they say they're the first, but actually Austria's already been doing this, is, is providing solar power. They have a pilot to provide traction power for their rail with solar and renewable. Solar renewables plus energy storage. Am I still there?
Neil, we can still hear you.
Oh, okay. So solar energy plus energy storage are actually more compatible with search demand, demands of rail traction. Solar renewables are actually more affordable at this point in time. And we've surveyed and found the places. And, and this is where this, this all becomes, you know, it's very encouraging to me to hear you talk about, you know, true transit development. So one of the things to do for that would be to have solar, you know, develop parking lots, don't only just leave parking lots. That's, that's a good place for, you know, transit-oriented development, which could include solar to help run the trains, but also to provide microgrids where you don't lose the power for those transit hubs. And like John Barton suggested, it can really get like dark fiber. I mean, in the past, that's what rail did. And where you could do the private, public partnership, like with the BPU, is we're going to do offshore wind off Atlantic City. Atlantic City Rail should be electrified, and that could be powered with Atlantic City offshore wind. And then the rail right away can provide, you know, the pass for, for transmitting solar renewable energy, which of course works best when it's distributed. And you do need to like, you know, combine it with, with other sources. I guess, I guess that, that's really it. You know, that, that we do not need a natural gas plant. We need solar renewable. It's feasible. Let's start it now. Talk about the funding. We have the funding. And this could be a model for how we can do solar rail like they're doing in the rest of the world, and it at least help your fuel cost, a major cost of running rail.
We appreciate that. Now, why don't we go back to Neil Weisman and see if he's still on the phone? Neil, are you ready?
Yeah, you got me? All right, I'm just going to look for your bugs, and I think that'll work. Okay.
You're on the phone.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to talk about cycle tourism and stuff that North Jersey can do to grow it. And you've got extended remarks. You've got a link in the comments section. In 2011, Rutgers determined that biking and walking added half a billion dollars to the New Jersey economy, and that's with very little contribution from out-of-state guests. Since then, New York City has grown its bike grid to 1,200 miles and its constituency of cyclists to 800,000. But New York City itself has no recreational facilities, not crowded with pedestrians and runners, and that's particularly true during social distancing. It's kind of, it's really rough. So cyclists who are looking for recreational activities must look outside the city. Effectively, they are a captive market for North Jersey. There are a couple of initiatives that North Jersey can take, which may be very inexpensive. First, permit cycling in South Mountain Reservation. The model is the Mohawk Preserve and Ulster. It hosts a quarter million visitors per year who pay daily use fees of up to $20. Notably, its trail network includes 80 miles of carriage roads, which are promoted for cycling. Unfortunately, the preserve is a two-hour drive. South Mountain Reservation also has a network of carriage roads, and it's only 45 minutes to be in New Jersey Transit, but South Mountain does not currently permit cycling. This predicts the privacy of millions of dollars in use fees and local restaurants of thousands of customers. Second, develop a series of numbered routes across North Jersey. The model is the U.S. Bicycle Route System. This would aggregate on-road bike lanes, separated paths, low-intensity residential streets, and industrial areas that get little traffic on weekends. The proposal can be accomplished simply by posting GPS directions. As the routes gain acceptance, they can be enhanced with signage and on-street improvements. You have five examples, which span multiple counties and which can be readily accessed by bridge, train, and ferry. Finally, widen the George Washington Bridge paths. On June 15th, the Shergis Pass across the Mario and Cuomo Bridge opened. In three weeks, there have been six reported crashes requiring hospitalizations and calls to shut it down until it can be made safe. The Cuomo path is 12 feet wide. It connects 1.3 million residents of Rockland, Westchester. The George Washington Bridge Bike Way will be seven foot wide, directly connecting 2.6 million residents of Bergen, Manhattan, and via its bike grid, the whole of New York City cycling community. If the George is deemed unsafe, that will seriously offset any measures to, for North Jersey to grow cycle tourism. Those are our remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Neil. Chair, we don't have anybody else that signed up in advance to speak.
Okay, Ted, then let's try to open it up for anyone else on telephones that may want to add comment. For those in the public who wish to comment, if you would please state your name, we'd love to hear from you. Ted and Melissa, I'm assuming that we are, we've unmuted all the phones, everyone?
Yep. I don't think anybody else would like to speak, Chair.
Okay, then hearing none, we will close the public portion. And I would like to point out that our next meeting of the NJTPA Board will be held on September 14 at 10:30 in the morning. And again, it will be a virtual meeting, and login details will be provided. May I have a motion to adjourn? Please state your name.
Charlie Kenny.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Charlie Kenny in Middlesex, motion to adjourn.
And Union seconds?
Thanks, Charlie. Did you hear that?
Yes, Union seconded.
Thank you.
You can any seconds. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the board's conversation today for Plan 2050 and for the public comments that were made. And I look forward to virtually seeing everyone on September 14. Thank you.
See you then. Thank you. Goodbye, everybody.